Eva, are we okay to get started?
We are.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I'm gonna go ahead and call the study session to order, and I think Eva, you're up first.
Okay, good evening commissioners. My presentation will be very short. It's just Scott Holcomb, who is an attorney that's normally at all of our meetings, couldn't be here tonight. So I just have a slide if Ashley could bring it up with his photo in case anybody's unfamiliar with who Scott Holcomb is, and some of his credentials. He works for Dickinson Wright. He graduated in Iowa School of Law. He's town of Queen Creek's attorney. He's also under contract with the town and has been helping us out. He serves as a zoning hearing officer for multiple other municipalities, and has agreed to serve as our zoning hearing officer. So as much as we love Noah being our zoning hearing officer for a year and then carrying on until we could get Scott Holcomb under contract, we are now, if it pleases the chair, transferring those responsibilities over to Scott Holcomb. But the commission will continue to serve as the board of adjustment. It's just the zoning hearing officer will now be Scott Holcomb, so nobody from the commission has to serve in that capacity.
Awesome. Thank you. Maybe we could get Noah a wooden nickel or something for his time served?
Yeah, and I did prepare some parting words. No, I didn't. I'm kidding.
Or perhaps Commissioner Bianchi can give you something from the airport.
He left us hanging there. I got excited when he said. Words he prepared.
So thank you.
Alright, thank you.
It's up to you whether or not to appoint.
Alright, well do we need a motion for that then, or do I just crown him king?
No motion needed. You would just need to say.
Yeah, I will support that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we'll go to Josh with DR 21-128, Floor and Decor. Josh?
Thank you Chairman Commissioners. DR 21-128 is Floor and Decor. Sorry, I forgot I couldn't control it from my laptop. It's proposed floor decor retail building located near, within the broader crossroads town center, commercial development. Initially, Crossroads was constructed mid to, mid to early 2000s. It encompasses both the eastern corners of Gilbert and Jermaine intersection, as well as a significant portion of the western side in Chandler. Since inception, since its inception, Crossroads has established itself as one of the town's premier commercial developments with its distinct village theme design accent, and with the lush landscaping, as you can kind of see on those pictures. I'm sure it's probably most of you know, you've probably been there. It is, it is honestly, it's just, it's an amazing looking shopping center, and Floor and Decor is looking to become one of the final pieces of that. They're proposing to locate in 80,000 square foot retail building on Phase 2, on the southeast corner of Gilbert and Jermaine, located on about seven acres of the 11 remaining vacant acres in the Crossroads development. Where am I supposed to point this? Sorry. So just because this is one of the first additions to the center in almost a decade, and as one of the last major pieces within the development, as I go through the proposal, I would just like to hear the commission's thoughts on how the proposal integrates itself within the established center, whether it does it well, or if there's any ways we can help it along to ensure the success of Floor and Decor, as well as the Crossroads Town Center for decades to come. So as I mentioned Floor and Decor, it's located on the southern portion of Phase 2, encompasses about seven of the 11 remaining acres. The proposal does add about 80,000 square feet of retail, with remaining vacant area for future pads, which would come in separately at a later date. As you may have noticed Floor and Decor will connect directly to the existing Hobby Lobby slash mega furniture building to its north, and to continue that cohesive storefront theme. The site is going to integrate itself into the existing internal vehicular circulation network, as well as create a new ingress egress point off of Gilbert Road. Overall, for the proposed landscaping, it's generally in conformance with the established landscape palette for the center, with the exception of replacing Sisu trees, which have, we've come to find out are pretty destructive on sidewalk and just other adjacent hardscape. So they're gonna be replacing those with blue palaverde's evergreen elbs. While Floor and Decor is only developing a portion of the site, they will be completing the perimeter landscaping around the entire vacant area along Gilbert Road and the adjacent residential community to the south. And in addition, a nature path connecting the adjacent reserve in Santan to the east, to the site will be completed during this phase to complete a pedestrian connection integration plan that was established with the site, you know, more than a decade ago, and which was started on the reserve at Santan and will now be completed with this project. Overall, the past few weeks, we've been diligently working with the applicant to find ways to achieve a cohesive design that's consistent with the Crossroads theme, while still maintaining some flexibility for Floor and Decor to incorporate their corporate theming. As you can see from the 2D rendering in your packet, which was one of the earlier iterations with what's currently on the screen, we've made some considerable progress on the design. However, we would still like the commission's thoughts on the overall design, and if there's anything else we can do to make this, this final major piece of the Crossroads development live up to the legacy of this, this beautiful shopping center. So these are some of the 3D renderings that the applicant has kindly provided us, just because as we all know, imagining something, imagining the final product in 2D is kind of hard. So they kindly provided us with, with these renderings, which give us a better idea of what the final product could look like. So just in closing, I would like to have any of the commission's input that you have on just any of the overall design package, design package, and more focused on the architectural integration of the Floor and Decor into the Crossroads Town Center. So, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Alright, thanks Josh. Can I bring up, does anybody have any questions or comments for Josh? If you'd like to start. Yeah, Commissioner Jones. Oh, did you? No? Oh. Commissioner Bianchi, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Me? I did too. Thanks, thank you Chair. Josh, just a question, is the signage as well gonna be taken as part of the DR package, or is that separately administratively approved? Because my curiosity is, does this building signage kind of mesh with the Crossroads Town Center signage, or their comprehensive sign plan?
Commissioner Bianchi, that's a good question. This is part of an overall comprehensive sign plan, which will, they will have to come in and amend. So while they do show the signage on these renderings right now, it's not part of the approval package, and we'll have to go through with that comprehensive sign plan amendment.
Because yeah, that was my question was, compared to some of the other retailers, do they, do they have similar amount of that facade signage? I'm kind of looking at the wood, the stone, and the tile signs that they show.
I, I haven't even measured.
Yeah.
Just because it's not part of the review.
Okay, I just didn't know if that meshed with the rest of the center is what I'm asking, but.
That is definitely something we will review when the signage is reviewed.
Okay.
At a later date.
And I think as overall general comments, I think the 2D rendering you just showed us tonight compared to what's in the packet, I'm more agreeable to. I think it looks a lot more appropriate with the, with the center itself. So I think you're making strides to get towards that. So thank you. Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Blazer.
Thank you. So, in the previous slide, it looked like the color might be slightly, slightly different. Does the color carry through, and then on the, on the one dimensional or two dimensional rendering, you know, where it says Floor and Decor, it looks kind of stark white compared to maybe a beige on, on both sides. So just, just curious, it's hard to tell how the color integrates. I think architecturally, it looks, it looks, looks pretty good. But.
See what you're saying.
Yeah, but the, but the color, does the color work well?
Commissioner Blazer, from, from my knowledge and what we've talked about with the applicant, what's shown on the 2D rendering is a more accurate depiction of what the final product would be, and that is part, those colors are part of the approved color palette for the center.
Okay.
It just must be something that was either overlooked in the 3D or.
And just, just a question, is the center section where it says Floor and Decor, is that, is that white? While both sides are gray, is that part of the branding? Maybe my eyes are.
Commissioner Blazer, you are correct. It is white, and that is part of their, that whole entry is more in line with their corporate branding.
Okay. Yeah, just, just curious. I think, I think it looks good.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, overall, I think design, everything looks good. I think my, my question was just, as sometimes you bring in these new developments to these, adjacent to these existing developments, making sure sort of like the traffic flows and everything kind of match up nicely. And so I think overall, it seemed fine. I guess the question was, off of Gilbert, there's an existing entry point, and then we're proposing to add another one south of that. Do you know what that distance is between the two? And I don't remember if there's a median along Gilbert Road there, would those be right in, right, or left? Full access points?
Commissioner Jones, that is part of the distance I'm not sure of. That is definitely something our traffic engineers do look at and verify before they approve it. I can't think off the top of my head what that number is.
Okay.
But that is something that is considered off of any entry exit point off an arterial. And I'm also not sure about.
Okay.
What the median is right now either. I will find out and let you know.
Okay, I would just be making sure that we have enough distance there, that it's safe and accessible. The other question I had just randomly is, in the middle of the parking lot there, you've got a bunch of gray shaded boxes. What are those?
Commissioner Jones, I believe those are the underground retention areas. I'll make sure they light those up on the final drawings.
Alright, Vice Chair?
Thank you Chairman. So my one question, on the site plan to the, where's my North Arrow? But on the bottom of the site plan, yeah, so it would be the south side, it says future development 14,500 square foot, and I just know that we were saying this was the last piece of it. So do we know what that's going to be, or is that outside of the Crossroads?
Commissioner, this is the last major piece of the Crossroads development. There's still an additional four acres, including two parcels on the arterial and that parcel you were speaking of before. You don't have anything concrete right now. This is just shown mainly just to ensure that there's some, you know, the layout will be compatible with a potential future development there. So nothing at the moment.
Okay. And then, you know, to echo, I think that the comparative analysis of the previous rendering versus this one is infinitely better with alterations, you know, both, both height and width along, so it doesn't look nearly as mundane and boxy. And if they're, if they're the approved color palette, then I assume that's, you know, more of a choice. So I think it's good. Thank you.
Alright, Josh, I would concur with kind of what's been said already. My, my initial thought on the 2D rendering that you initially had in the packet, it looked very flat. The new, the undulation in the, in the 3D rendering, I would, I would be more for that. This new rendering obviously is a little bit better. Color being approved by, or an approved color in that site, I think is fine. With regards to the layout of the entire site, parking and whatnot, I'm, I'm okay with it. So I have no, nothing additional to add.
Thank you Chairman.
Alright, anything else? Okay, thank you Josh.
Appreciate it. Alright, and with that, we'll go to Samantha with GP 20-07, Valor Christian Center and Z 21-09, also Valor Christian Center.
Alright. So this is GP 21-07 and Z 21-09, Valor Christian Center. The subject site is about 6.7 acres on Warner Road, just west of Higley, within the Gateway Character Area. The site is currently Valor Christian Center's property, which you can see is partially developed and has some remaining vacant land. This is a study session item tonight, so I'm looking for any and all feedback you might have regarding the amendment and rezoning. And I want to say that it is conventional rezoning with no requested deviations. The applicant is proposing to change the current land use designation from residential 3.5 to five dwelling units per acre to neighborhood commercial. And staff considers this an appropriate shift, as NC is the lowest intensity non-residential land use, and is intended to serve residential areas while serving as a buffer between the more intense commercial uses like those to the east along Higley Road. The rezoning request is from Single Family Eight to Neighborhood Commercial. And right now, it's currently in between reviews. It's between second and third review. So, so far, as the site exists today, it is in conformance with the development regulations of the proposed NC zoning. And on this slide, I do want to note the applicant's intent for this rezoning is to increase the allowed signage. They are at their max signage in their current zoning district SF8. Staff isn't expecting other commercial developments on site, but staff and commission should analyze the impacts just beyond signage. At their required neighborhood meeting, six citizens attended and asked various questions about signage details, how to become more involved in the public participation process, and also what future development could be allowed in the NC zoning district. And combing through the meeting minutes, a church representative had shared that there is a deed restriction that limits the use to place of worship only. So staff took into, took that feedback into account during review, and will keep looking into that while it is in review. So far, I haven't received any additional input from other citizens. So that was my presentation, very short and sweet. I'll take questions or feedback, and thank you for letting me present.
Alright, thanks Samantha. Anybody have questions? Commissioner or Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Well, I think that to have something switching from residential into commercial is quite refreshing. So I very much welcome that, and I think that having it be the lowest intensity, it's not going to overtly crowd the homes there. So, you know, in that regard, I think it's a great idea. I don't know much on the way of the deed restriction, but I would assume, you know, can you explain what, what that actually means that they're saying, that if it does say that, does that affect our decision here today? Or does that just impact what they're actually able to do regardless of what the zoning change is to?
Yeah, Vice Chair, the deed restriction is a private transaction. So the town would have no purview over that. They would settle that privately. And as I said, if they, if they did change their commercial development in NC, they would be allowed that by right. Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Samantha, a couple of questions. One is, if this is rezoned to neighborhood commercial, can you give us an idea of what other alternative uses there could be? Just to give me a sense of what this could become?
Oh, that's a good one. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Besides a place of worship, kind of what would a typical other neighborhood commercial use be, I guess, would be my question. And then the second question is, with regard to if it is neighborhood commercial, do you have an, what are the sign size limitations? To get a sense of how big of a difference we're talking about?
Sure, yes. I can answer the sign question. I have some of those notes here, Commissioner Jones. Right now, in SF8, their max square footage for a freestanding monument sign is 32 square feet. And in neighborhood commercial, it would bump up to 60 square feet, as an example. The max height is eight feet in SF8. And the max height in neighborhood commercial is 12 feet. As for uses allowed, I can picture it in my head, our use table, but I don't have that off the top of my head. I can follow up with you on that if you were curious as to what's allowed in NC.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think, I think my concern was just that it sounds like from the applicant, the purpose was really just to enlarge the signage. But it requires a zoning change, which in this deed restriction apparently doesn't really transfer. So I guess my concern would be that we approve this zoning and it becomes something quite different than what it was intended to be.
Yeah, I can definitely understand that concern. I took a look at their approval history, which goes back to 2005, and this parcel had four phases that were proposed. So in the long term, it sounded like they had quite a vision for the church to remain. But yeah, as staff for now, we don't foresee commercial development changing. Okay, thank you Eva. Okay, this is straight from our code. It's just a little blurb about neighborhood commercial. It is intended for small commercial sites within or near residential neighborhoods. The emphasis of this zone is on uses that serve the daily needs of abutting neighbors. Uses permitted within NC tend to be limited to small scale and with minimal traffic noise and sound impacts. And limited to under 25,000 square feet for the max lot coverage.
Alright, anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you Chair. So Samantha, does this allow for any ancillary or temporary commercial uses with the rezone? I'm trying to think around holiday times. I think they do fireworks displays or vendors are on site. I don't know if it's this parcel or maybe one adjacent. But I'm curious if what the, to the commercial rezone, if that allows that, would it be more compatible with the code? And do they also, would they also get use of the signage, the new signage, if they wanted to advertise that as well with the commercial zoning?
Commissioner Bianchi, for the second question, are you talking about the temporary uses taking advantage of the signage?
If the temporary use or the commercial use was allowed, like I said, I think I've seen fire, fireworks sales on there, could they benefit, could they use that, the church's signage as well, or, or not? That's more my curiosity, if the commercial is even allowed as an ancillary use, or the, the temporary use, I should say.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Bianchi. Those are very good questions. I will double check on that. I do know that our temporary uses and seasonal events have to go through their own special permitting and licensing process. I'll have to double check on what would be allowed that's different.
Yeah, that's fine. It's, it's study session, we'll see it again. But other than that, at least what I see on the surface, or similar to the Vice Chairman's concerns, or his comments, I don't see any detrimental impacts with the request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Blazer, do you have anything?
No.
Alright.
Looks good.
With, with changing it to, and this would be outside of the area where the current church is, correct? The parcel that we're talking about is not, because if, I'm just wondering when they rezone it, if it says it's limited to 2,500 square feet, does that then impact the existing building? Or is this parcel not attached?
Vice Chair, it's all one parcel, so the existing structures are counted towards the 25,000 square feet.
Okay.
I think the code reads exactly 25,000 square feet per user or use.
Okay. Okay, I thought, I thought you had said 2,500, that was why. So I misheard that then. Okay, forget it. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else?
Okay, Samantha, I, I don't have an issue with this. My, my questions have been answered with regards to additional use and potential, you know, down the road, is this gonna have a negative impact on us? I don't feel the, the difference in, in the sign, obviously we're not discussing that at this point, but the difference in size, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a huge deterrent in that location. So I would be okay with this. But have you gotten all your questions answered that you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, with that, Ashley, we're gonna go to you for UP 21-36 and DR 21-174, Talis Harbor Behavioral Health Hospital.
Alright, thank you Chairman and Commission. As you mentioned, this is Talis Harbor Behavioral Health Hospital. There's two applications that we'll review tonight. Use permit, UP 21-36, and design review, case DR 21-174. This property is located in the Val Vista Medical Growth Area, so it's just south of Mercy Gilbert Medical Center. You can see here on this map, it's, it's not off of an arterial roadway, but it is located at the southeast corner of Melrose and Rome. Those are collector streets within the Medical Growth Area. Just south of the site, you can see that there is residential, that's a multifamily project that, that some of our commissioners may recall called BB Living. Just north on the north side of Melrose is the Copper Springs Behavioral Health Center, as well as a variety of other medical, medical uses in this area. I'll also point out that within this, this project is within the Improvement District 20, which identifies different roadway improvements for this area of the town. So this is compliant with that ID 20, in that it'll offer improvements to Roman Melrose as needed, and then the driveway alignment for this facility. We have worked with the applicant through the pre-application process to make sure that those align with each other. We are pretty early in the review on this one, but I thought, given the use, it's better to get it in front of our commission sooner rather than later. So we're in first review, with comments not due back to the applicant for a couple of weeks. So when this does come before the commission, we may have some additional changes to it. And so we're, we're really interested in your early feedback on this one tonight. As I mentioned, there's two items, the conditional use permit. So we're looking for just general feedback on the proposed use of the Behavioral Health Center in this location. And then in terms of the design review, when we get to those elevations, that's primarily where I'm seeking feedback, just on the vertical movement of the building, the mechanical screening, and the colors and color blocking. So when we get to that, keep, keep those items in mind that we're seeking input on. As it relates to the use permit, this property was, or this application, I'm sorry, was submitted under the old land development code, so prior to the refresh. In that land development code, you could apply for a use permit to operate a hospital within the general office zoning district. So that's one of the purposes for this application. We also require a use permit for inpatient treatment of behavioral disorders. And so there's kind of two things wrapped into this use permit, the hospital in general office and then the behavioral disorders. Along with the behavioral disorder requirement, there is a fifteen-hundred-foot separation required between schools and daycares. If you recall back to the aerial exhibit, Camp Verde High School is on the west side of Val Vista Road, and then there's a couple of schools in the proximity as well. This is outside of that fifteen-hundred-foot boundary for those facilities. So I thought it important to point that out. This facility is a twenty-four-hour behavioral health hospital that's intended to serve adults and geriatric patients, which is a little bit different than the Copper Springs facility across the street that's just a behavioral health hospital that isn't geared towards those geriatric patients. Related to the site, it's a three-acre portion of, of the parcel. The parcel itself is fourteen acres, so they're looking to carve off three acres for this facility. So the use permit would be limited to those specific three acres. It wouldn't cover the entire fourteen-acre parcel. As I mentioned, it's in the Val Vista, Val Vista Medical Center Growth Area, and the proposal includes a forty-eight-bed Behavioral Health Hospital that's just over thirty thousand square feet. So looking at the site plan, as I mentioned, this is at the southeast corner of Melrose and Rome. The building itself is oriented so that it receives its primary access off of Melrose to the north. And as I mentioned, they do align with the Copper Springs Behavioral Health Drive that is across the street. Through the pre-app process, we talked to the applicant about the benefits of doing a master site plan since, since it is a larger fourteen-acre parcel. And based on the submittal, I think they just weren't ready to, to plan for the future site. But we were happy to see that they provided access steps to property to the east, both at the north and south locations, so that when that property develops, they're not limited in the access that they receive. So we're hopeful that when the rest of the project comes forward in future phases, that it'll connect and provide some good circulation through this parcel. The other thing that I wanted to point out while we're looking at the site plan is that this is a secured facility. You can see two courtyards kind of center, center to the site. There is no direct access out from those courtyards to the public, and so this is a secured facility. As it relates to the landscape plan, staff needs additional detail to do a thorough review of this plan, so that will be part of our review comments going back to the applicant. Generally speaking, they are meeting the setback requirements, providing landscaping at the south and east consistent with the zoning district that they're located within. But we'll be looking for more detail related to their foundation plantings around the building, ground cover species, what those courtyards will look like. So more detail to come on those as this moves forward through the process. They are meeting the minimum landscape requirements. They've got twenty-eight percent open space when they're required to have fifteen. In terms of the colors and materials, they've got a variety of, of colors. They've got three shades of cement plaster that make up the bulk of the building. They've got some accent detailing with that composite wood cladding. If you, if you take a look at this image here, the, the colors and materials board, there's, there's some good variety. I think that those colors blend really well. One of the comments that you probably read in your staff report was related to the compatibility of colors, because if we go to the elevations, they seem to contrast a bit more than what we see on the color board. So we'll be looking for just some verification of colors. I think staff would be comfortable with what's shown on the colors and materials board, but if, if reality looks a little bit more like this, I think we, we'd like to see maybe a little bit less contrast between those colors. Staff is looking for feedback tonight from the planning commission on the vertical movement of the building. There's, the, the building does have a quite unique shape, and so I think some perspectives would really help us visualize what this building looks like. But everything feels pretty horizontal. There isn't a lot of that vertical movement with the coverings over the windows and then the flat roof line. In addition, seeking some feedback on the integration of the mechanical screening on the roof. That is a mechanical screen that is made out of metal. There isn't metal used, utilized elsewhere on the plans, and we like those to look architecturally integrated, like it's part of the building. So staff thinks that they could use a little bit of work on that. And then these are the west and east elevations. So we're generally seeking some feedback on that use permit, the proposed use for the Behavioral Health Hospital at this location, and then if you've got any feedback for us on the colors, materials, and elevations. Thank you Chair.
All right, thank you Ashley. Anybody have any comments or questions for Ashley? Commissioner Bianchi.
So, thanks Ashley. Question for you. So when we talk about geriatric behavioral health, is that similar to a memory care unit that we'd seen? Or is it a different focus?
There, there's no memory care, but it is for patients fifty-five and older. Geriatric is generally fifty-five and older.
So it's not memory care, so different focus. And then I think you kind of touched upon it when you said it's a secured facility. So that just means no external access for patients?
Correct.
Unless unsupervised?
Correct.
Okay. I guess in far as, those are my questions. I guess as far as comments go, I guess my preference would be maybe that it didn't back up to a residential use, but that's just a preference. It doesn't mean that I'd be totally against it. As far as the design review comments go, I, I would agree with you. I'd probably prefer that the mechanical screening above the front entrance blend better with, without as much contrast, especially with that metal material. I'd probably prefer some break or accents along the flat facade just above the windows there at some point along those elevations. And then I do agree with you on the, on the color palette, but if you say that, you know, hey, the contrast that we're seeing with the elevations and the colors and materials board might be not as, as stark, or it will actually blend better, then I'd be much more agreeable to that. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Blazer.
I'm, I'm in full support of the use permit. I think it's great. I think these hospitals provide a great service, and it's very much needed in our community. And then I don't, I don't have anything more to add on the design. I think, I think I'm good there.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I would say, design review, I, I like what I see. I agree the mechanical screening could be better integrated. I wondered, one question I had actually was, so this is right in front of the Copper Springs Hospital. Is there any way to kind of tie those two in a little bit so that it looks a little bit more consistent? Obviously, they're going to do their own thing, but I thought maybe if staff can kind of get an idea there on, on how to make them look a little bit better together. But overall, I like the, you know, large setback from the residential use. The landscape's great, so I'm, I'm supportive.
Thank you. Chairman and Commissioner Jones, I, I had intended on including some images of Copper Springs because, and, and I forgot unfortunately, but they are quite different. And so that was one of the, the comments I was going to send back to the applicant, is is there opportunity to, to blend a little bit? So I think that's some great feedback. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Anderson.
I'm just going to comment on the elevations. I like the design. I think there's a lot of in and out play with the, with the building that I think is going to give that vertical breaks that you're looking for. You can see it in the floor plan. It's not really evident in the black and whites, but the colors are very helpful, especially since they added the shadow lines in there. So with all the undulations going in and out, it is going to help relieve what's happening up and down. Because if you look in some of the, some of the patient rooms, there is a break there, and then one set, setback. So I, I think that's going to be fine. I think once you see it in three D, I think you'll, you'll be happy with it. And then in terms of the colors and materials, I'm, my personal opinion is I always like the kind of contrast. I think it really does help buildings pop and give them its kind of own identity versus if you're trying to blend in what's happening around the, around the area. And I like the fact that they're getting away from, and that seems to be the trend now, is getting away from the typical tans and the southwest colors. So all in all, I, I think the, the building is nicely designed. I think if they are able to provide some sort of three D perspective of the building, I think that would really help support it, and I think you would be more okay with, with the building in terms of how it's, how it's moving around the, around the, around the footprint up and down. And then, yeah, with the screen wall, the mechanical screen wall. I mean, if there's a way to maybe bring in the horizontal siding material up there, I know there's ways to do it. I mean, this is probably like a standard mechanical screen wall that, you know, it's like a packed thing that they can do. But if they're able to maybe bring that material up, maybe that would help kind of tie everything together, make the whole building more cohesive. But other than that, that's, I, I think it's a nicely designed building.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Ashley, I just have a question. Did you say geriatric is sixty-five or fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Oh, man, that makes me hurt. No, I, seriously, but I don't have a problem at all with the use permit. I mean, the residential I do, it's a little bit of a, you know, sticking spot, but it's not going to be something that would make me rule against this. I think that it's a good use. I think we definitely need it. With regards to the, the metal flashing, I don't know that I instantly have a problem with the metal flashing use, the way that they, they're using it, because I think that that's a common material used there. But maybe they could increase the size of the parapet in the front or something to maybe blend that in a little bit and use it someplace else. The rest of my questions were answered. The biggest question I had was whether or not it was a secure facility, and you answered that. So otherwise, I don't have a problem. Don't have a problem with the use permit at all. The design, I, I actually like the colors and the contrast there, so.
Thank you Chairman. I, if it's okay, I have one other piece of information that I forgot to include. And I, I appreciate all of the feedback. The applicant is holding a neighborhood meeting on February tenth. They're not required to. But just to seek some input, so I know a couple folks have mentioned a concern about that residential to the south. So on February tenth, hopefully we'll get some participation and hear any concerns that they may have.
Okay, and I would assume we'll see this again at some point?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Did you get everything, Nate?
I did. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, we will have a discussion of the regular meeting agenda items. Currently, we have a few things on consent. We've got the DR twenty-one thirty-one Marriott Town Place Suites, which has continued to March second. So that will be taken off consent, obviously continued. We've got UP twenty dash zero-six Heritage North Ground Floor Residential and UP twenty dash zero-eight Heritage North Hotel. Ashley, do you know if we got any community members here to speak on that behalf? And is there any reason that we would need to pull that? Any commissioners want to hear anything on that? Okay, so we'll leave that on consent. And then I've got continuance on item number twelve, which is GP twenty-one dash oh-six Hopewell Industries, and number thirteen Z twenty-one dash oh-eight Hopewell Industries, which is on the non-consent agenda. But we will be having a special meeting on February fifteenth at five PM for that. My understanding is that's a Zoom call. Is that correct, or will there be in person as well?
Chairman, the commission can attend remotely, but staff will be in person, and the public can either attend remotely or in person.
Okay. All right, with that, that is our agenda. So at this point, I would take a motion on the agenda.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, I've got a motion by the Vice Chair, Vice Chair to approve the agenda.
Here, don't we do that during the public hearing? I think we just review
Oh, yeah, you're correct.
the agenda now, see if we make any changes, and then we do the vote during the public hearing.
Glad you're here, because you always correct me on that.
Sorry.
Like to retract my motion.
With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn our study session, and we will take about thirteen-minute break and come back. I guess it helped by turn my mic. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Yeah, hot mics. Um, okay. Where am I? Hang on. Alright, go ahead and call the meeting door. I'm sorry. I was just trying to find my space and I couldn't read correctly. So, uh, go ahead and call this, uh, regular meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. Go ahead and have a, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Johns? Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Munt?
Here.
Chairman Simon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Alright, and, uh, thank you. If I could get an approval of the agenda as we discuss.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to bring that motion up to, uh, approve the agenda as written.
Alright, I have a motion by the vice chair. Do I have a second? Second? I have a second by Commissioner Bianchi. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I'll get my glasses on. Excuse me, my geriatricness here. Alright, at this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. And I don't have any comment cards. Do we know if we have anybody here who'd like to speak? Alright, not seeing any. We'll move to report from Council A's on and, uh, Councilman September. You sure you don't want to make something up? Thank you. Alright, with that, we'll move to the, uh, public hearing consent items. Uh, all items listed are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission made by a single motion approve any number of the items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate motion, action, excuse me. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. We have no items moved to the consent, uh, agenda, but we are continuing, uh, number nine, DR twenty-one dash thirty-one Marriott Town, Marriott Town Place Suites. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, we have a motion by the vice chair. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Blazer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will move to our non-consent public hearing items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to the public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment card indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further comment, public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And, uh, I have both items twelve and thirteen, GP twenty-one oh six Hopewell Industries and Z twenty-one oh eight Hopewell Industries on the non-consent item being continued until February fifteenth at five P M. Not seeing any other items on the public hearing, non-consent. We will go to the administrative items. This is gonna be the fastest meeting in the history. Councilmember September, you sure you don't want to comment on something? Uh, administrative items are for the commission, discussion and action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the item number in which, uh, you wish to address the commission, may or may not, uh, the commission may or may not accept public comment. And do we have any administrative items? Not seeing any. We will move on to planning commission minutes. We'll, uh, accept a motion on the planning commission minutes from the January fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning commission minutes from January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Have a motion to approve by the vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Commissioner Blazer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed? Alright, uh, motion carries. Uh, we are not scheduled for executive session. Do we have a report, uh, from the chairman and members of the commission? Anybody want to take the floor? Nobody. Alright, with that, Eva, planning services manager, do you have anything wonderful to bestow upon us?
If I may take a few minutes just to introduce some new planners on our team. We have Noah Schumerth. He joins us from worked in Casa Grande, worked in Green Bay, Wisconsin, graduated from ASU where he just completed his fellowship in the Netherlands on bicycle and pedestrian paths. And he is our new planner two. I'd also, I'm not sure that everybody has met Salvatore DeSanto. He's been working for us for a little under a year as our planning tech. He has since been promoted to planner one. We'll be interviewing Monday for two new planner techs. We'll have an ad, ad out for our principal planner position. And then after that, we're hoping to find a senior planner. So I just wanted to welcome them aboard. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, guys. Be good to work with you. And Eva, it sounds like you have your work cut out for you to fill some positions. Anybody knows people with planning experience? See Eva. Um, with that, yeah, looks like we're done. So I will adjourn the meeting. And I would like that in the record books. It's the fastest meeting on record. Alright, have a wonderful evening. We'll see you next month. Actually, we'll see you on the fifteenth, fifteenth of, uh, February.